One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rabbi, thank you so much. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw absent, and Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no presentations, proclamations, or recognitions today. But now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on consent agenda items number one through three, you may do so. Once you fill out the green slip to the back of the room, fill it out, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. She will call your name. We would appreciate it if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? For approving consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. No one opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Mayor and council lot number one is to consider amending the collective bargaining agreement with Beaumont Firefighters Local 399 related to pension contributions. On January the 11th of this year, the city council held a special meeting in this room to discuss the funding status of the pension plan for the Beaumont firefighters. And a firm named GRS performed an actuarial study of the plan and determined that it, the plan design was not sufficient to fully fund the plan within 30 years as required by state statute. Currently, the city contributes 16.5% of each employee's salary to the plan, while the employees contribute 17.25%. So if you'll follow along with me in the memorandum to fund the plan within 30 years, the company GRS recommends the following changes. Number one, increase the city's contributions to 18.25% beginning October the 1st of 2022. Increase the city contributions to 20% in October of 2023. Increase retirement eligibility age from 50 to 55 for all new employees hired after January the 1st of 2022. And then lastly, lower the retirement benefit accrual percentage from 63.15% to 60% for all new employees hired after January the 1st of 2022. So the firefighters held elections in February to vote on the retirement eligibility age and the retirement benefit accrual percentage as required by their plan, and it passed by a vote of 147 for the changes to 17 against. Their changes to the plan are contingent upon city council approving the contribution rate changes before you today. The estimated additional cost for the city in fiscal year 2023 is $250,000, and the estimated additional cost in fiscal year 2024 is $440,000. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Todd, can you explain to the citizens watching in the community this increase? How would it affect our budget? Yeah, Todd, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so for the citizens watching, basically every 1% that we contribute to the fire pension plan costs the city $250,000. So we're gonna have to go from our current rate of 16.5% up to the 20% as mentioned in the memo. So over the next couple of years, going from 16.5% to 20%, that's an extra 3.5% at $250,000. So the total cost from where we are today will probably add another $875,000 to the budget over the next two years.
Any other questions, Councilmember Turner?
No, ma'am. I just wanted to explain.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
The, alright, so this is effective January 1st, 2022. Has there been any employees hired since then?
No, they have not hired anyone since January 1st yet.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so my next question, changing the percentage that we contribute is only a small portion to the overall fix of the pension problems. More importantly is getting more personnel into the plan. Do you know where we stand on that?
So, I can't remember the date, but probably, I think, the beginning of January in 2021, maybe council approved an extra nine positions in the firefighters. And also, since then, we've dedicated to basically move our EMS division from a civilian workforce to a firefighter workforce. So through attrition, as we lose EMS employees through retirement or determinations, they will be hired on as firefighters. So periodically, we'll probably have to come back to council and amend the ordinance to increase positions in the fire department. So that's how we plan to grow the, basically, heads and the number of personnel into the fire department.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
I noticed when we did meet, they had a place and plan for local, recruiting local. Can we kinda talk to that, where we can kinda let the community be abreast that they are looking to hire and go after local?
Yeah, I wish someone from the fire department was here to maybe speak on that.
What they currently do, they hire firefighters that are already certified firefighter EMT. What their plan is to hire people, civilians, off the street, hire them into the fire department, and certify them after they're hired. So that'll open up as far as the pool of people that they can hire. For example, I used to work at, when I was hired, they had 600 people applied and took the test, and 300 people passed the test. So those 300 people were actually qualified to be hired. Now, I mean, they may have 35 people take the test, and maybe half of those will pass it, and then once they go through the process, you might end up with six people that can actually be hired, and you have 12, 13 positions that you need to fill. And so they have to start the process all over again. By being able to hire civilians straight off the street, you can open up your pool. And that, by doing that, it makes more people that actually live here in Beaumont eligible. So, it's kinda safe to say that with them, with this new program, that the likelihood that we have people living here, working in the fire department, it would increase that. So, yeah, that's what I want the community to understand. They did have a plan in place to increase, you know, local people working in the fire department. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
This is for Todd. Todd, right now, I believe that 61% or so of our overall budget goes to public safety, that being police, fire, and EMS. Is that about right?
That's about right, yes, sir.
So, going forward with these increases to pension funding, is that percentage expected to stay the same, or is it expected to increase? I realize that that's gonna be a function of what our tax rate's gonna be, and what we're gonna be receiving in revenues in the future. But do we look to be at about the same percentage going forward, or how's that gonna be affected, do you think?
So, in talking with the actuaries, we're hoping that it would not need to exceed the 20% going forward. A lot of it depends on investment returns. The fire pension plan has a little more latitude on type of investment structures as opposed to the city. So, there, and those actuarial studies are usually a year or two behind where we are on the current day. So I know they had some really good returns from a current year that were not projected in this last study. So, a lot of it depends on the market. So it's hard to say, but we're hoping we should not need to exceed the 20%.
Alright.
Thank you. Councilmember Durio.
I just wanted to say, on the vice of city attorney, I'm recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. At this time, all in favor for approving item number two, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Number one.
Item, item number one, I'm sorry. Item number one, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one extension, and the item passed with one extension. Thank you. I have the reading of item number two, please.
Mayor and council lot number two is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brass Star Contracting Incorporated of Beaumont for the wastewater treatment plant sludge drying beds rehabilitation project. The project consists of work pertaining to repairing and rehabilitating the existing concrete walls for four sludge drying beds and other related pertinences. The contract is in the amount of $795,600. A total of 120 calendar days are allocated for the project. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor for approving item number two, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I have the reading of item number three, please.
Item number three is to consider approving a three-year contract with WorkQuest for litter removal along the city rights of ways and other specified areas throughout the city. WorkQuest is formerly Texas Industries for the Blind and Handicap. Beaumont Products and Services located here in Beaumont would be providing the services to the city on behalf of WorkQuest. Beaumont Products and Services has been providing grounds maintenance and litter removal services for the city for the past 25 years. This agreement renewal allows for the removal of trash along, again, city rights of ways and other areas as determined by the code enforcement division. Under the current agreement, the cost to the city is $17.20 per person, per hour, per person. The new proposed cost is $19.50 per hour. That's a 13% increase over the current cost. So the estimated annual cost is $183,709. So that price covers all material, labor, and equipment. Again, Beaumont Products and Services, we think they do a great job on behalf of the city. Funds are available in the general fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
I noticed it says, remove trash and litter in the right of ways. Does this, the "we buy houses" signs that are kinda up all over, all throughout Beaumont, does this kinda consist of that as well? Because I've been getting quite a few emails and calls and comments about these signs that are all throughout our city, and they're kinda starting to get cluttered, and it's kinda becoming an eyesore to a lot of people.
They don't remove the signs, we do. And you're right, there are a lot of signs out there, and we're targeting those, and we probably need to step it up even more and ask our employees in certain departments to get out of their vehicles. In some cases, you need a rake, but, you know, go and pull them down off of utility poles specifically and in the right of way. So, we hear you, and some folks in this room are over some of those departments, and we'll step it up.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz, and then Councilmember Durio.
I noticed that under the state guidelines, by using the Texas State Use Program, that the city is exempt from competitive bidding requirements with this vendor. But ordinarily, wouldn't we want to go out for competitive bidding? Is there any reason why we're not using competitive bidding, other than we don't have to for this particular vendor?
If the council would like for us to, we can. We don't recommend that. We're very pleased with them. They're employing, they have different disabilities, so we believe it's a great program, and something that's worked for 25 years. But if the council ever wanted us to go out for bids, we could.
Alright, I'm just looking at a 13% increase, and, you know, I realize we're in very inflationary times right now, and maybe that's what's needed. But, okay.
Councilmember Durio.
Back to what Councilman Turner was talking about, those signs. Have we addressed the people that are actually putting them out?
We do. We, okay, so if we'll pick them up, the different departments, a lot of times will notify Mr. Booms Department because we have these robo-calls, and so they'll specifically call that number over and over, telling them it's a violation, please remove their signs. In some cases, we file charges in municipal court. It depends on how egregious some companies are. So it ebbs and flows. Sometimes it's a big problem. I think right now, I'd say there's a lot of signs out there that we're trying to address. Sometimes we get their attention, and it looks better for a month or so. So it's something you have to stay on top of.
Mayor.
Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you. I'd like to ask legal counsel. I understand there's some difficulty in prosecuting when it's not known exactly who's putting the signs out. But if the benefit is to a certain vendor, would that not be a possible way of addressing that concern?
So typically, in municipal court, the charges are filed against, like, whoever the contact person is, when you call their name. So there's typically an agent or someone attached to putting out the signs, because most of the time, what we do is we, our employees are supposed to pick up the signs, someone will come and claim them. We're just not, you know, trash and stuff. Some people wanna come pick up their signs if they were not supposed to be in the city right of way. So whoever does that, it's a repeat offense. We get a contact, and we try to file the charges against the individual as opposed to a company. It's just that, in most cases, the fine doesn't outweigh the benefit of the advertising, so it's not really a deterrent.
So maybe we need to raise the fine?
Well, I can understand that, but the actual person that's being paid to get the signs out?
Is an employee, and typically, it's not the same person. They can contract out, so we don't really know who that person is.
Right.
But we know who the agent, or the individual who's paying for that advertising is.
Okay. We might need to discuss that, have a workshop on that at some point, because it's not ju, it's getting ridiculous.
It's bad.
In certain areas of town, and there has to be a way to have the benefactor to be accountable for the actions that, with whomever they're contracting with. So I, I'd like to do that.
Thank you, and I'll second you. Councilmember Turner.
Good, 'cause I was gonna second you. But, yeah, so appreciate that, councilman. Really appreciate that, because it's been an ongoing concern. We've been getting a lot of phone calls about it. It's good to see we're addressing it and trying to move forward to it. But Sheree, as far as, you know, experience from the past, some of these fines, and when they go to court, has the, how have some of these outcomes been?
Typically, they pay the fine. So it's not really a big, you know, trial setup and scenario. There have been few occasions where they said, this wasn't my sign, this is a different agent's sign, but for the most part, we, they pay the fine.
But that's what us going after the agent or the person that we feel?
If an employee sees someone putting a sign in cities right of way, like they would, at most points, hey, you can put the sign there, individual, pick it up and take it. It's not a violation unless it's left there unattended. I think penalizing someone who's just, you know, putting out where they were told to put it out, you know, maybe, it's almost always a teaching moment when we, when they come in and they, you know, I didn't realize they put it out in the right of way. Where can they put them? You know, if it's on private property, these are places where you can put stuff, so on and so forth. It's, you know, educational. But most of the time, they hire individuals, and they say, you have 50 posters, 50 signs, and I need them put out strategically in places in the city. And they're not giving them any direction on where they need to go, where they need to be. And overwhelmingly, what you see is, you know, if it's in the cities right of way, in a very high-traffic area, and they get 10 calls, and that could lead to, you know, five sales, paying a fine of, you know, $200 just isn't, $500 just isn't a deterrent.
I understand, I understand that. But I'm thinking that we may need to look beyond just the agent that's being paid to put the signs out. Maybe we need to look at the company that's receiving the benefit.
That's who we follow into. We don't follow into individuals who's putting the sign out. They contact, we contact who owns the sign. There's always a phone number, a contact so-and-so. That's who we go after. We don't necessarily go after, like, the, I guess you wouldn't say the person putting out the sign, but the person who's the owner of the sign.
Have we looked at what other cities might do in issues when they have issues like that?
We can. I can tell you that signage and sign litigation is a very hot topic right now for a lot of cities.
Okay.
So we can look at it.
Let's look at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Durio.
Sheree, are the fines covered by state statutes, or is that something that we can address and raise, so it'd be more of a deterrent?
So, in municipal court, we're able to accept fines based on accordance with state law. Our highest fines deal with, or higher fines deal with things that deal with public health and safety, and everything else is kinda on the lower end. So your health code violations can exceed, and your fire code violations can go up to $2,000. Those are rare, but for the most part, our average fine in municipal court is anywhere from $100 to $500.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
There's a question. Is that per sign?
Per violation. Each sign will represent a violation.
Okay, that's it. All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We're gonna pull the discussion item to discuss plans for the city 2022 Juneteenth celebration, due to the fact that there was not sufficient information for us to discuss it today. So now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make a public comment, please make sure that you filled out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, to the front of the room. The green light will come on when it's time for you to speak. The red light will come on when your time is up.
Christopher Matthews, 3875 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. It is International Women's Day, so I wanna celebrate you and the city attorney.
Thank you.
Y'all are making history in Beaumont. Continue to do a good job. I know you just pulled the discussion item, but I may not be able to make the next meeting when that is talked about, so I just wanted to share some thoughts on it. Juneteenth is, here in Beaumont, historically been celebrated mostly in Terre Park, and I know there's been some great celebrations. People of my age demographic have not necessarily been able to partake and participate in some of the celebrations in the past. So, I kind of, I'm not able to carry as much sentiment, you know, from not being able to partake in it. But I do think that it is, Juneteenth is a holiday that does need to be celebrated for everyone, and it doesn't need to be like an exclusively black holiday. So, my thoughts are, and I know that this has kinda come up as a kind of a debate between, should we do it in Terre Park, or should it be done at the event center? My ideas are, if it's possible, to maybe do both, just because I do believe that some of our Caucasian citizens should be allowed, or it should be held at more of a neutral site, that they feel more comfortable celebrating its holiday with us. The fact of the matter is, history states, and it's true that, you know, there are a lot of Caucasians that did die for our right to be free, so they should be allowed to be, celebrate the holiday just as much as us. And I think that this is a way to bring about the racial reconciliation in Beaumont that we've been trying to accomplish. I just want to behoove y'all to consider possibly trying to celebrate it at both parks, so that way, some of the older demographic of blacks that had the holidays in Terre Park are still able to relive some of the nostalgia, you know. But those are my thoughts, and y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Elaine Henderson, 6260 Regina Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I wasn't gonna speak today, but I've been sitting back there contemplating, deciding I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say something for right now. First of all, underneath all of our beautiful Interstate 10 overpasses look gorgeous. They're beautiful, they're clear. But where did they go? They went throughout our city, not just the west end, not just the north end, not just the east end, not just the south end. They are everywhere, and they're on people's property, they're on people's private property, they're on, their businesses are behind businesses. And we, for those, I guess I should clarify, I knew that Ms. Mouton knew I was talking about the homelessness problem. And what got me involved, because I'm involved in so many things, and I know this has been taken care of, I know we have a commission working on this, but my son is putting in a business that involves children, and he had somebody walk up the other day, come in with children there, wanting to know what's going on here, and he was homeless, he was also on drugs. And my son told him, you need to leave, I have kids here, you don't, you don't belong here. And he said, oh, I can't be around children. Well, oh, great. Not only are you homeless, you're a convicted pedophile, living who knows where, around the corner of Major and Phelan. So, I'm just pleading, and why I'm here today is not ask you to do something about it, because I know you're trying, and I know there are different things going on. And I know that there's avenues from the state that might be able to help us. But we need to educate our citizens. What do we do about this? What do, I mean, Jake didn't even know to call the police. I mean, gee, we have five policemen in our family. Call somebody. He's trespassing, he doesn't belong there. But I think we need to educate, because now, we've not really dealt with it Starbucks, you know, Summit Starbucks, some of those problems we've had, but not throughout our whole city. And I think it would be nice to do a public announcement, some education, to, if you have somebody that is at your house or in the back of your business or whatever, because I'm not sure, other than calling the police, excuse me. And our police are strapped. I mean, we already know they're overworked. We already know our fire department's over. We already know that we don't have enough people to deal with every single one of these. But they need to know how to handle them, what to do, and what their rights are. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lila Corn, Mayor, 5770 Calder Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello to the mayor and council members. I put in a variance for our resident at 5770 Calder. We needed We needed access to the back of the property from Phelan Boulevard and I sent in a variance to my councilman of Ward Two, uh, Mike Getz, and I also sent it to the engineering department. And I've al- we have also, um, made sure that the property had recessed, uh, area so that when we pull in off of Phelan Boulevard that it would not stop traffic. Um, we're asking for this variance being that Phelan is supposed to be, is considered a collector's street so that they should not have, uh, access to the street from residents. But I've also looked up and down Phelan and there is a resident on Phelan that has access to a residential, uh, home that has access regular, uh, which meaning every day that they would pull into this, uh, driveway. We're only asking for temporary or, well, not temporary, but, um, only access to the rear for personal use of our, uh, RV, and recreational vehicles, which won't be used all the time. So, I'm not, uh, able to get any information or hear from anyone to say yes or no on this and it's been over a month. So, I decided to come here and talk to y'all today to ask that this variance be bought before the city and discussed so that, uh, we can have access to the back of our property. Um, there is no access from the front to get to the rear of the property, so we would need to, and I don't want to have to jump over a curve. That's what I was, been told so far, that you could drive over the curve. Well, this other house that's on Phelan, there's not driving over the curve, so. Um, and I, like I said, I walked up and down the street and I found a house on 57. It is 7950 Phelan, has access to the front of this house. So I'm asking that, um, y'all consider giving us access to the rear of our property.
Okay. After the meeting, if you will contact, uh, Mr. Boone, Chris Boone, to your right, he will be able to, uh, speak with you about it, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move into, uh, council member comments and I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Duria.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
I'd like to congratulate the, uh, CVB for collaborating with, uh, Poor '99 for the Mural Fest that took place this past weekend. If you're out and about downtown, you're going to see, uh, a lot of art has been created on several walls. Yeah, I had just a few minutes to go by and, uh, did see a lot of food truck vendors, a, a play area for the kids. It was, uh, really kind of a neat thing, so I think these types of events are, uh, needed in Beaumont and when, especially when you're doing a public-private collaboration, uh, like we did with Mural Fest. So, uh, job well done, Dean. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Another shout out to CVB. Uh, I just, when I read that we're going after some great grant funding, Kyle's staff. I think it's great. Every time I see the city take advantage of any grant opportunities, I'm definitely advocate for it. So appreciate you guys working together going after that. Another thing I realized when you guys did Mardi Gras, not only did our city of Beaumont Communications Department, CVB, and Emily's Department, y'all all came together and worked that event together and I love seeing that. You know, it kind of made my heart smile seeing everybody working hand to hand to make it a success and y'all did a great job. All three departments or whoever else participated with Mardi Gras as well as the Mural Fest, so thank y'all. The next thing is, I know I asked on last week, uh, about the transit update and I know today out, today something possibly was happening on the 8th. If hopefully I can get, we can see what came about. Hopefully it's some positive news. Other than that, you know, just thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes. Uh, again, it was a wonderful event, a mural festival. There was a lot of people and the arts, uh, it's supporting the arts and it was beautiful. Uh, and I also wanted to welcome, uh, Mr. Ingram aboard, new in the city attorney's office. Uh, good to see you at city hall instead of county courthouse. And, uh, also I'd like to thank, uh, all the work that, uh, was done by Dean and his staff along with Poor '09. A great, uh, collaborative effort. It, it really helped Beaumont shine, so thank you, Dean. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal. City Attorney Sheree.
Councilmember Samuel kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, but yes, Mr. Ingram is new to our office. Um, he's going to be a welcomed addition, um, to the city attorney's office and we're excited to have him.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
I, uh, did my due diligence and, uh, I talked to, uh, your former mentor, James White, uh, when you worked for him in the, uh, Capitol Building and he had glowing things to say about you, so, uh, welcome aboard.
And our city manager. Thank you. Mr. Boone? Thank you. Well, it's on me. So I would like to say, uh, today is, um, International Women's Day and to all women, um, that I would like to say congratulations. Thank you for all of the work that women do. To everyone that, uh, has paved the way for people like myself, like city attorney Reed. Again, congratulations and thanks for all of the work that every woman does every day. Also, Dean, of course, when you're the last one to speak, but you just get to hear it again. Wonderful, wonderful, uh, art fest, uh, murals that were painted. And we, uh, I met Lauren and Dean on Orleans and Fannin Street because the legendary Barbara Lynn is painted on one of the murals from her 1962, 1962, um, album cover. And, uh, the artist was from Michigan and she was also a guitar player. And she said, "I wanted to do something that was relevant to the city." And she said, "Being a guitar player herself," and she looked at Beaumont and people from Beaumont and she found Barbara Lynn. And when you look at it and think that they did that with cans of spray paint, it is unbelievable. And so, um, Dean and I were out there with Barbara Lynn. She signed her mural. And so it was really, really a great weekend. It was 80 degrees, perfect weather. So it was a great weekend and again, uh, kudos, Dean, for a great, great festival. Kudos. Also, um, Saturday night, um, the Ladies of Motown was with the Southeast Texas Symphony and it was awesome. If you did not attend, you missed it. It was really, really great. It was, you missed it and I didn't see you there. So, I'm telling you, it was awesome. I hope that the, uh, symphony bring it back. And, um, it was just a, a fabulous night. I had another event that, um, I was invited to, but I had these tickets that I had already purchased. And you had free tickets? I purchased mine and was happy to do so. But it was a fabulous night and again, uh, thank you Southeast Texas Symphony. And on Friday night, I was in Houston at, uh, Beaumont United Playoff Game. And they are headed to Thursday, San Antonio, 7 o'clock. They will play 7 o'clock if they win on Thursday night. They will play Saturday at 3 o'clock. Uh, after I greet the Girl Scouts on Saturday morning at 9 o'clock, I plan to be in San Antonio for 3 o'clock. So, go Beaumont United. Good luck. Um, hopefully we'll bring another state championship back home to Mr. Durio's Ward Four and to city of Beaumont. And just a little comment on the homeless. Of course, the underpasses do, um, they look great. You don't have to stop at a red light and worry about anybody running up to your car. However, those people that are no longer under the underpasses are, a lot of them are back in the same spots that they were. However, if people have private property, they are allowing them to pitch a tent on their property. Unfortunately, that's their private property and it's not a favorable thing that we would like to have. But when it's your private property and you're given permission for them to stay, there's just so many legal parts that we can and cannot cross. But September 1st, House Bill 1975 allowed us to be able to remove them from under, um, the interstates. And so that's why legally we could remove them from the interstates. But then when you have private property, um, that's your property and you're allowed to allow what you want on your property. I would say within guidelines of the law. However, if someone approaches your private property and you do not want them on your property, by all means, please call 911 and call the police. And especially if there are children involved and you are a registered pedophile, you should not be within so many feet. And so that is the law. And, uh, the Homeless Coalition, uh, meets the first Thursday of every month. Uh, you're welcome to come to the meetings and, uh, we meet at the Beaumont Event Center first Thursday of every month and maybe that's some information that you could come and find out some of the things that are going on. And, um, Juneteenth, uh, again, that workshop was full because really we didn't have enough information to discuss today. However, every park in this city is a public park allowable for every citizen to walk in and attend any event. When you're in a city public park, every citizen is welcome. Because first of all, we're not going to stop and ask if you're not even from the city. So it's a public park. A public park is a city amenity. And we would hope that any event in this city that everyone would feel comfortable enough to attend, regardless of what park it's in or what the event is. But I think, um, everyone will be very, very pleased with, um, some of the ideals that are coming about for Juneteenth and, um, it would be a, a great celebration and the city does put on, uh, some great events, so just stay tuned. So we'd like for each, um, thank each and every one of you for coming out today. And it's 2:17 and we will adjourn. Thank you.